At six P M, January the eleventh, I call the Saluda County Council to order. At this time, I would ask Councilman Frank Daniels to say a word of prayer for us, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we, we thank you this evening. Father, we, we thank you for your, your grace. Father, we thank you for your mercy. We thank you for being a God that's slow to anger and abounding in love. Father, we, as we come in the year of twenty twenty-one, Heavenly Father, we just, we just pray that you will watch over us in our daily travel. Father, we pray for peace where there may be confusion. We pray for these great leadership, this council, that you will go with us in twenty twenty-one and guide us, direct us, and that we may make the best decision for the betterment of Saluda County. We thank you, Heavenly Father, and again, we thank you for your endless love for mankind. In Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the Constitution.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this particular time, we have the need to approve the agenda. But because of a situation that did arise this morning, we didn't have the opportunity to publish twenty-four hours ahead of time to add two additional items to the agenda. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to accept the resignation from Moore Taylor Law Firm as the county attorney is for Saluda County. That is the first item to be added. And then the second is a motion to hire G P Callison at the rate of two hundred dollars per hour as interim Saluda County Attorney until a firm is selected as a result of the upcoming request for promotion, proposal. The chair will entertain a motion at this time to accept the changes to the agenda, to accept those two items in. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
By Councilman Daniels. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Atkinson. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. The agenda is amended.
Mr. Chairman, I would note that, that, under those, those rules for amending the agenda, and I'm G P Callison, by the way, and I'm, I'm just making this statement regarding that, that exigent circumstances were shown.
Yes, sir.
And that would be, that's the reason that the agenda is being amended because of the resignation of the...
Thank you, Counselor. It, it, it is by what is called the extenuating circumstances to do this that it had to be done at this particular time. At this particular time, the chair will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to accept the resignation of Moore Taylor Law Firm. And in your package, you have a copy of that resignation letter. Do I hear a motion to accept that letter of resignation?
No move.
By Councilman Atkinson. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
By Councilman Anderson. The motion carries. The letter of resignation is accepted. The second motion is to hire G P Callison at the rate of two hundred dollars per hour as interim Saluda County Council Attorney until a firm is selected as a result of the upcoming request for proposal, proposal. Is there a motion for this?
No move.
In motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Counselor, we welcome your input into this, this council and make sure we do things the proper way. Thank you, sir. Now, the motion to amend the agenda has been done and the two actions have been taken for that. At this particular time, the chair will open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair of the Saluda County Council for the year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Councilman Daniels.
If I'm in order, I have served my term as Vice Chairman. I would recommend that Councilman Anderson be our next Vice Chairman of this county council.
Councilman Daniels nominates Councilman Justin Anderson as the Vice Chairman. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I declare the nomination closed. Councilman Anderson, if you would excuse yourself to the break room, please. I think I'm proper. Councilman Anderson has been nominated and is the only nominated person to serve as Vice Chairman of the council. Is there a motion for, well, the motion's been made. I guess we just need to call for the vote. All in favor of Councilman Anderson to be the Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Councilman Anderson is the Vice Chair. Thank you, Kerry. Councilman Anderson, you are the Vice Chair for twenty-one, twenty-two for the Saluda County Council. Gentlemen, in your package, you have a copy of the minutes of the December ninth and December the fourteenth meeting minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December nine and December fourteen. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion or corrections or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Minutes are approved. At this time, we'll have the reports from the council members. Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to welcome everybody to the first session of our regular county council meeting, and we hope to see you throughout the year. And bring a friend with you. Let them see how the county do business.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Atkinson.
I just want to say I'm really, really proud to be sitting here and I hope that I can serve all the people of Saluda County. I'm looking forward to it and I'll need your help. Like Councilman Daniels said, please come to the meetings and please let us know what you're looking for.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Anderson.
I just want to humbly thank you all for entrusting in me to serve as Vice Chairman. Just being here just a short two years. I've gone from, I guess, the rookie to second senior member of council. That's how quickly things can turn. But I, I do appreciate you all entrusting in me to, to serve. Let's have a great year.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Beedenbo.
It's good to see everybody here tonight. Good crowd. Like I say, it's a lot more than we've been having in the past. I know this virus has folks excited, upset, whichever words you want to use. It's also good to see our new sheriff here tonight with us. Like I say, thank you for being here. We never know when we're going to need law enforcement, E M S, or whomever, but like I say, it's good to have our folks here with us. We have some of the best workers in Saluda County and we got a lot to be proud of, but we got a lot of work I think we can do on this council to improve Saluda County and I'm wanting to work with the folks on the council. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Beedenbo. At this particular time, gentlemen, I, I just want to bring to your attention and make sure that you understand the candidate newsletter that was laid on the desk for you has to do with filing your statement of economic interest with the Ethics Commission. You are an elected official and you have to quarterly send this disclosure in. There are fines for not doing it. Please pay attention and if you need help in doing so, you do it online. That does need to be done. First one's due on April the tenth for the first quarter. Under all business.
Mr. Strumpet.
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that the filing for statement of economic interest has to be in by March thirty-first and it's April tenth for the campaign disclosure.
Excuse me, you're, you're...
They're two different things.
You're exact, you're exact. The statement of economic interest has to be in by March thirty-first. Yes, sir. That's correct. I, I stand corrected with that. Yes, that's correct.
One, one other thing.
Yes.
It's my understanding that you're supposed to file your statement of economic interest if you're a new time councilperson before you attend your first meeting.
We will check on that tomorrow with the Ethics Commission. Very good. Thank you, sir. Anything else from anyone? Under all business, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion for third reading of ordinance number eight dash twenty, an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement binding between Saluda County, South Carolina, and Mason Solar L L C, a company previously identified as Project Mason, acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors, collectively called the company, pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or the expansion of certain facilities in the county. Second, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project. Third, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project. And four, other matters relating thereto. Is there a motion for this third reading?
I make a motion.
Of Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Beedenbo. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The third reading is passed unanimously. Next is the motion for third reading of ordinance zero nine twenty, an ordinance authorizing and approving, first, the establishment of a joint county industrial and business park pursuant to section four dash one dash one seventy of the South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen seventy-six, as amended to be known as the Saluda County Project Mason Joint County Industrial and Business Park in conjunction with Edgefield County, such park to be geographically located in Saluda County. The execution and the delivery of a written park agreement with Edgefield County as to the requirement of payments of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to park property and the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park. Third, to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park within Saluda County and other matters related thereto. Is there a motion for the motion of the third reading of ordinance oh nine twenty?
No move.
By Councilman Daniels. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Beedenbo. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for second reading of ordinance twelve dash twenty, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number three dash seventy-seven, prohibiting nepotism or the hiring of relatives by Saluda County. And gentlemen, this is a, a, a new nepotism policy that was adopted in the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Therefore, the nepotism ordinance three dash seventy-seven should be repealed. This is the motion for the second reading. Is there a motion for that?
I make a motion.
For Councilman Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Atkinson. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the second reading motion, say aye. All opposed, no?
No.
Vote is four to one. Beedenbo. At this particular time, the chair would entertain a motion to ratify a resolution given to Karen T. Whittle, an employee who spent thirty-four years with Saluda County. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to ratify that resolution. Is there a motion?
No move.
By Councilman Daniels. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. I have another motion under new business. Motion for the first reading of ordinance oh one twenty-one to amend the multi-county industrial park agreement between Saluda County and Aiken County attached as Schedule One of Ordinance Number thirteen thirteen to add other properties requested to be placed in the multi-county park and other matters related thereto. Is this proper, Mr. Williams?
Sir?
Tell us about this particular thing on the industrial park. Have you got something to, that you can share with us on that?
Yes, sir. This, this goes back to two thousand and seventeen when you all approved a fee in lieu for, it was, it was Project Beulah, but it was being done by Cypress Creek. They have sold their interest to another developer and so at that time, they did not have all the parcels in place and so they are, they have put some more parcels within that multi-county business park.
Okay. So, and you do have a copy with the additional parcels involved in it in your package.
And in the original agreement, it was, it does state that it can be amended by, by an action of council.
But, but this is, as it relates to Project Beulah, right?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Williams. Motion for the first reading. Is there a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance oh one twenty-one?
I make a motion.
Uh, Councilman Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Beedenbo. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Motion to adopt a resolution designating and approving a sponsor affiliate on satisfaction of the requirements of Title Twelve, Chapter forty-four of the South Carolina Code so as to allow the sponsor affiliate to qualify for benefits pursuant to an existing fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes. Is there a motion to approve this sponsor affiliate?
No move.
No move by Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Beedenbo. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Wow. I think we got through all the motions, didn't we? Did I leave, did I leave one of them out?
Slow motion.
Everything's okay?
Slow motion.
So, so... It said it was for Beulah. I didn't see it. Damn.
I didn't quite finish reading.
Yeah.
I did not finish the top two lines. Excuse me. I'm sorry. May I do it now? The arrangement between Saluda County, South Carolina, and Beulah Solar and other matters related thereto. Thank you. At this particular time, gentlemen, you have in your package a record of the appointed county council committees for the year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And do I need to read these off as they are in here? Okay. Right. I'll do that. Under the various committees of operation within the county, under administration and finance, it would be the chairman and the full council is on that committee. Public safety would be the chairman and Councilman Daniel. Health and welfare, Councilman Beedenbo serves as the chairman of that committee with Councilman Atkinson. County planning would be Councilman Anderson as chairman and Councilman Beedenbo as the second member. Economic development is the chairman and Councilman Atkinson. Public works, which is solid waste, that's public works one. Councilman Daniel is the chairman and myself as the second member. Public works two, roads and bridges, would be Councilman Daniel as chairman and myself as second member. Under the education committee would be the chairman and the full council. Under justice would be Councilman Anderson as the chairman and Councilman Beedenbo as the second member. Under agriculture, forestry, military affairs would be Councilman Beedenbo as the chairman and Councilman Anderson as the second member. County-owned property is Councilman Atkinson and, as chairman and Councilman Daniel as the second member. Quality of life committee would be Councilman Atkinson as chairman and Councilman Anderson as the second member. County-owned vehicles and equipment is the chairman, myself, and Councilman Atkinson. Now, you have a, a further delineation of each one of those councils or each one of those committees in your package. At this time, gentlemen, we have a situation where the employer's portion for county employees' health insurance has increased effective January the first. The council staff has come up with the actual cost between January the first and June the thirtieth. And at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to transfer from contingency an amount of twenty thousand dollars from the contingency fund to pay the employer's portion of the increase for employees' health insurance, which has already gone into effect. Chair will entertain a motion for that move from contingency.
I make a motion, Chairman.
By Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Beedenbo. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. At this particular time, the chair would entertain a motion to reappoint Paul Potts of five oh four West Utah Street, Saluda, to the Saluda Airport Commission for his second term expiring, expiring October eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
No move.
No move by Councilman Daniel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Atkinson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Paul Potts has been reappointed. Then a motion to reappoint Gary Sprague of one twenty-six Scooter Bridge Road, Batesburg, to the Saluda County Airport Commission with his second term expiring June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion to reappoint Gary Sprague?
Motion.
By Councilman Beedenbo. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilman Anderson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Gary Sprague is reappointed. Councilman Daniel, I think you have an appointment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to appoint Doris L. Hicks of two thirteen Stevens Road, Saluda, to the Saluda Nursery and Center Board with her first term expiring one twelve twenty-four.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Thank you, Ms. Hicks.
Thank you for serving.
Yes.
At this particular time, gentlemen, unless there's something that's going on, we need to go into executive session. Chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session at this time.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Councilman Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd list the, the reasons for going into executive session.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
If you'd list the reasons for going into executive session.
I'm sorry. I, I did not do that, Councilman, and I will do that right now. I got it. I got it right here. Council may go into executive session pursuant to section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight, one, two, and five of the South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen seventy-six, as amended to discuss a personnel matter in the public buildings maintenance department and receive legal advice on economic development project Bob Sled. Um... Bob Sled.
That'll be interesting.
Motion's been made. Motion's been seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. We're going into executive session. We will be back very shortly. I do not think that we're going to be that long. Mr. Williams, we'll call you in just a couple of moments after we get situated, okay?